Thank you, Mr. Luna. We will now convene the study session for February 25th. The first item on this agenda is to hear a presentation and provide direction on the proposed youth and amateur sports complex and analysis of its economic and fiscal impact. Looks like we have Mr. Garcia from Visit Mesa coming forward.
Mayor, council members, good morning. Joining me here today are Jill Welsh and Danny Court with Elliott Pollak and Company, COO and senior economist, respectively. You may recall, the last time I was here was mid-December, talking about the benefits of this project. Spent the majority of the time really outlining the details that were derived from the initial feasibility study that was conducted by the Nations Group. We had a few guest speakers here that spoke to the viability of the project, particularly from a user group perspective. But at the conclusion of that presentation, I'd indicated that we engaged with Elliott Pollak and Company to both vet and to flesh out the numbers from that feasibility study. So that's why we're here today. You'll hear very little from me and more from them. But before I throw it over to them, I just wanted to recognize a few people that are in the audience behind us. First, the chairman of the Visit Mesa Board of Directors, Gary Levine, is with us. The president and CEO of the Nations Group, Mr. Chris Nations, also joins us. And then we have a few staff members here as well. Josh Todd, our director of sports, and our director of national sales, Ms. Jenny Dennison. With that, I'll throw it over to Danny, Jill.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Happy to be here, representing LAD Pollak and Company. My name is Danny Court, senior economist. We undertook an economic and fiscal impact study of this youth and amateur sports complex. So what we'll be presenting is kind of the executive summary, high level. There's also a report available to you to go into that detail. This is the site plan at Brown and 80th Street for the youth and amateur sports complex, which includes indoor and outdoor soccer fields and an indoor field house as well. So we went through each kind of level of economic activity, starting with construction. Then we also look at direct operations, the operations of the sports complex, and then the tourism impact of the influx of tournament attendees and coaches and spectators. We go through each type of tax revenue that the city of Mesa collects. These are the major ones: sales, bed tax, use tax, lease tax, property tax, and also state shared revenue. And as Mr. Garcia said, there was a market and feasibility study prepared by the Nations Group, which a lot of the assumptions of this economic impact study rely upon. The construction assumptions for the facility is about a $56 million construction cost. That goes into our economic model to kind of determine how many construction jobs can be generated off of that and also the tax revenue. And then in terms of operations, there are expected to be 17 employees at the sports complex. And then you have kind of a pro forma operating expense listed by line item here. I won't go through each one. But bottom line is a $2.6 million annual operating expense that we're going to then compare to expected tax revenue that the sports complex could generate. This again is a fairly large table that kind of goes through our assumptions. So the whole model rests on these operating assumptions and also tourist assumptions. So in terms of the operating revenue, so this is considered City of Mesa enterprise revenue, not tax revenue. The fields will be rented to local sports leagues and in addition to the field house. So there are rates tied to those fields that are expected to be rented on an annual basis. In addition, the sports complex is expected to sell concessions, and there's an operating margin or a profit margin assessed to that. And so what we also have here is, you'll see throughout the report and throughout our presentation, we have what's called total potential and also a capture rate of 70% and 50%. Those numbers are used frequently throughout the report. So total potential is, during the feasibility study, a calendar of weekend tournament events was created. So what would be a realistic, what the sports complex could realistically host are these weekend tournaments. So this isn't a, the total potential is not, hey, we're going to have something here 365 days a year. There's, you know, there's field maintenance days, and most of this is happening on the weekends. So what we mean by total potential is that a schedule of actual events that are occurring now at other sports complexes coming here and Mesa hosting that on these weekend events. So that's total potential. What we did is take a cut of each of those to provide some scenarios. So in all cases, it may not be actually realistic to reach that total potential. Mr. Garcia says he can sell that all the way to the, out to the, every weekend, and I actually believe him. But for purposes of this analysis, we typically are relying on either a 70% capture of that total potential or even 50%.
Excuse me, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Mr. Kavanaugh.
So basically, you took a very conservative approach versus the always optimistic Mr. Garcia approach, right?
Yes, that's what we're trying to provide, is a defendable conservative approach to this, to show, you know, more realistically what we think the city of Mesa can capture, or at least a conservative baseline. And hopefully, if the facility books more than what we're showing as a scenario, then you'll be above what we're reporting for revenues.
Right, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
This is a huge tourism type of activity. So a lot of the assumptions rely on tourist activity coming into the city of Mesa, lodging here, and spending their disposable income here when they're on their trip. So the total potential visitors, if the facility were booked for all the events, is just north of 400,000 visitors each year. That's not visitor days, that's visitors. So we have a number of assumptions here that kind of dial down into spending figures. We have a length of stay for both outdoor and indoor events, typically two to four days. We have the percentage that may stay in a hotel when they do come here, persons per room, and that gets into a total room night figure. We've then taken another cut of that for City of Mesa. So we're assuming that when these visitors come and those that do stay in a hotel, we're assuming that Mesa can capture 75% of those. And that's kind of based on the current hotel inventory in the city of Mesa and the location of the facility. We have a room night that's based on a Smith Travel Research for the city of Mesa. Most of these assumptions come either from the feasibility study, and it's based on kind of amateur youth sports surveys. So we can talk about any one of those if you have a question about it. But the lodging revenue, total potential, is $23 million each year. Again, when you look at the 70 and 50% capture rates, you get down to 16.4 and 11.7, and that's a Mesa capture of that hotel revenue. Then for spending, there are going to be kind of regional or local visitors, you know, those that are from within the metro Phoenix area that come to participate in these sporting events. And then there's going to be out of town or out of state visitors that will stay in those hotels. We have different spending figures for each of those. There's a $200 per day, per person per day spending for those out of town visitors that will include that lodging figure, and then a $50 per day for a local. So that would be, you know, spending on food and entertainment. That comes out to, the total potential for that is $160 million in spending. Again, with the capture rates, that goes down to 80 and $112 million. So in total, the total potential spending within the city of Mesa, we're estimating between $91.6 and $128.3 million each year. So in terms of an economic impact or a jobs impact for construction at $56 million construction, that's 527 construction jobs, $34 million in wages, and $89 million in economic activity. That's not necessarily, those jobs aren't necessarily, you know, City of Mesa residents obtaining those jobs, that's kind of a county-wide impact of jobs. And then when we get into operations, we expect the direct operations of the facility to remain fairly constant, no matter how well the facility is booking. But in terms of tourism, those tourists that are spending money in the economy are supporting jobs, are supporting retail services, entertainment, and lodging jobs. So depending on how well the facility does on a year-to-year basis, we're expecting the tourism-related spending in the city of Mesa to support anywhere from 1,700 to 2,400 jobs each year. In terms of City of Mesa tax revenue, this is this table here. So construction tax revenue is just under $800,000. That's just based on the construction value and also some of the construction workers possibly living and spending money within the city of Mesa. Then we get to annual operations. The operations is, there is some tax revenue there. So when there's leasing going on or concessions, there may be a sales tax tied to that. There'll also be purchasing supplies, spending on utilities at the facility. So there will be some tax revenue there from direct operations. And then the revenue is direct revenue. That will, it'll be enterprise revenue to the city of Mesa. So again, depending on how well the sports complex does on a year-to-year basis, we're expecting the operations to generate anywhere from 1.1 to 1.5 million dollars each year. And then tourism-related impacts within the city of Mesa would be an additional 2.1 to 3 million dollars. So on a year-to-year basis, we expect anywhere, the facility to generate sales, tax revenue to the city of Mesa in the range of 3.2 to 4.5 million dollars. So if we go back to the operating revenue, compare that to the operating revenue, in each case, at even a 50% capture, the tax revenue generated from the facility, you're netting $623,000 on an annual basis. At a 70% capture, it grows to $1.9 million in excess of the expected operating costs each year. So that additional revenue can be applied toward, you know, the debt service on construction. But that's additional revenue above and beyond the operating. What we kind of just started to touch on in the report was the development impact that a sports facility of this size and quality could do. There was initial interest in developing a hotel as close to the venue as possible. So we did a kind of a hypothetical model of a 125-room hotel. That's located here on the bottom half of that table. The city of Mesa would receive about $200,000 in tax revenue for each hotel of that size, a 125-room hotel, and revenues of about $700,000 each year. We don't add that to the revenue above because if the hotel is located next to the venue, there's going to be some shifting of tournament participants at other Mesa hotels to that hotel. But what you do get is something like the Sheraton next to the Cubs stadium, where they're going to get spring training visitors during the month of March, but the rest of the year, you're getting transient lodging, and the city of Mesa is able to capture more transient lodging because you have more hotel rooms. So there's definitely an impact there for non-tournament transient lodging when a new hotel is built in the city of Mesa. So it doesn't, we don't, we don't address potential additional retail development. There's likely to be restaurant, fast casual or fast food restaurants that are going to be very interested locating next to a facility like this with that number of visitors coming to the facility each year. And it is much less seasonal than a spring training event. You're going to have events going along all year long. Our final table is kind of taking you through a 12-year scenario of two years of construction. What we did in the first 10 years of operations is kind of give the facility a, what we call an amusement park effect. Well, it'll be the newest, the newest facility out there, and there'll be a lot of interest from these tournaments to come, see what Mesa is, see this new facility and try it out. So we apply the 70% capture in the first three years of that 10 years, and then we step that down to 50% over the final 10 years. So under that scenario, the city of Mesa would expect to receive just under $37 million in that 12-year time period. That's the end of our presentation. If there's any questions, we'd love to answer them.
Thank you very much, good presentation. Counsel, Mr. Richards.
I think just the, kind of one question I have, is has your firm, or any other economic firms like yours, done an analysis on a project like this somewhere else in the country, had it built, and then seen how close they actually got to the projected revenues? And it doesn't have to be an apples-to-apples soccer complex, it can be a softball complex, baseball, it doesn't matter. I just want to see if a sports complex that had great promise had an analysis done on it and then it met projections. That would give me a lot more comfort.
Sure. So you're looking for a report done prior to the construction and then an audit, kind of an audit report of-
Right, maybe five years after, you know, to see how it performed against projection.
I don't have an example of that, but that's something that can be researched to see if there is, you know, a report out there that is doing that.
To that point, I know, I had a conversation a week ago with the mayor of Frisco, Texas, and they, they have a huge youth sports complex, along with others. They're the new home of the Dallas Cowboys training facility, and he said, "We are, you know, crazy for these types of facilities." He invited us to come out and look at theirs because he said, "You really ought to come if you're toying with us ideas." So if this progresses, I think there are examples out there where we can go and kick the tires and say, "Did this, that in fact deliver the economic benefits that were promised?" Mr. Thompson.
Yeah, the, just for the record, Mark, I have never been opposed to the soccer field, so whoever is spreading that rumor throughout Visit Mesa, please let them know that I'm not opposed. My opposition from day one has really been about the cost. And what you're showing us, the numbers that you've provided us are really, they're really good numbers. Plus or minus, it looks like it's a break-even on the maintenance side, which, you know, is all I ask for because I don't want to put the city in debt paying for the maintenance upkeep of soccer fields. So it's good to see that it's kind of a wash on the maintenance side. But again, I still go back to the big nut, which is, how do we pay for it? And, you know, and 57, 56-plus million dollars is a lot to go back to our citizens and ask for, especially when we just talked about removing facades and stuff downtown for $500,000 or more. We still have parks that we haven't built throughout the entire city regardless, I mean, this is, this is for one specific area within the city, and we still have multiple parks throughout the entire city that we still haven't built, and we still have money left over to build and to finish out. So before we, you know, I guess what I'm saying is, much like the facades, I hope that we would be able to put this down and let's prioritize what we're doing and where we're going and how we're going to get there before we start looking at taking on more debt.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Counsel?
I'll jump in on this. I told myself I'd probably be careful what I say today. So I've been, behind the scenes, I've been a really tough devil's advocate on this. In fact, I think I've hurt some feelings. It gets back to me that, well, hey, I'm one of the two that's not going to vote for this thing, and I don't know if that's the case yet, but a lot of really big questions need to be answered. I'm going to ask Mark, who I think's an outstanding guy, he's been, you know, very upfront about everything. So why not the private sector? If I, in a nutshell, I heard for a $55 million investment, we're going to generate $91 million a year? Fantastic numbers. In fact, the private sector should be beating down our door to be able to do this. So, Mark, why isn't the private sector doing this?
Mayor, council member Fenter, that's a great question, and I get it all the time. The fact is, it's not the private sector who would benefit from something like this. The private sector's not going to build a 24-field complex with a 110,000-square-foot field house on it. The revenues just aren't there. The primary beneficiaries of a project like this is the city itself, and it's through all the visitor spending and those impacts. And getting back to, you know, a discussion point earlier about whether or not it breaks even, I mean, even in the most conservative scenarios, at 50% capture rates, we're showing 600,000 in the black after operating costs. I can promise you, I'd stake my reputation on the fact that we're never going to be at 50% capture rates. We're going to be more in that 60% to 70%. So to answer your question about other parks, you could use those revenues to offset the costs of covering, you know, the cost of those other parks that are perhaps struggling at the moment. You could put it towards debt service, you could hire new policemen, you could hire new firemen. So a number of different scenarios. But to answer your question again specifically, it's not the private sector who benefit, unless you're going to, as the mayor suggested in Frisco, Texas, have a Major League Soccer, as they do there, called FC Dallas, which has a whole academy system. So they're investing in their academy, their youth system that moves up through the ranks and into their professional, they're going to pay for it. And it was probably part of the deal that they brokered when they got the stadium put in the first place. So unless you have that type of investment, and I don't see a Major League Soccer franchise coming to the market anytime soon, it's really not the private sector who benefits, it's the city itself.
And if I could follow up, Mayor. So the private sector does benefit, it's spread over this massive amount of entities in hotels and restaurants and other things. There isn't, there is a private sector that is benefiting from this, but there's, what you're saying is, there's no single entity that would, and again, with all these revenues fractionally through the sales tax and maybe, you know, some of the other little pieces, the bed tax and other things, the city then benefits. So I would say of 91 million, you've been speaking of this fractional, well, the city of Mesa through these different taxes would then benefit. It's quite a bit less than 91 million dollars. And without getting wonkier down into the weeds, just concerned, and this is a little bigger picture, so very soon, this council is going to have this collision of items that need to be taken or might be taken to the voters here in this upcoming election. We have ASU, which is a big deal for a lot of folks, we have this effort, we have the early childhood education portion of things, you have the public safety groups that are coming forward and saying, then we'd probably, because of this, we'd have to have a charter vote with regard to spending money on sports complex types of deals. So what I've said to you behind the scenes and others is, I see this, we're on a collision course, and everyone has some great projects ahead. How are these going to collide and who survives in this super collider collision that we're about to go through? And so my concerns are, as you try to, and you've been wonderful, and I don't doubt the great integrity of the group that you've had here, all seem to be really wonderful projects, but at some point, that taxpayer at the end is going to go, "You want me to vote on four tax increases of varying portions and pieces?" And they're going to, I just think we need to, I'm concerned how it's headed down the road. So that's my open and honest look at it.
Mr. Richards.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Kavanaugh?
Thank you. I look at this in a context of history, as I always do, and I go back to 1998, when the city looked at a lot of competing needs and looked at quality of life issues, ways to drive revenues, to help improve quality of life in the community. And that was a challenging process, and from a council that was very diverse at that time in terms of political viewpoints. And there were multiple issues, each of which had advocates, to hire 100 new police officers, 100 new firefighters at parks, transit, bus shelters, swimming pools, oh, and an art center. And, but I think we tried to look at it as a total, in terms of what are things that are important to us, that we want to upgrade or shore up. And I know we have, we're going to have some competing proposals that are coming to us to look at strengthening, strengthening the base for revenues for public safety, which is absolutely, which is critical. We're going to be getting proposals, looking at helping strengthen our education component, which is the hallmark of our city forever. We're looking at a project like this that promotes tourism like very few other things do on a year-round basis, and as a community, we thrive and rely on tourism revenues in so many ways, as Councilmember Fenter put it, in terms of the businesses in our community that benefit from it. The city does directly in terms of bed tax revenues. And so I guess I'm approaching this as, as we continue our discussions, is maybe, I like to call it quality of life too. And I think the city, over the past years since 1998, has demonstrated that we provide residents, here are the projects we want to do, here's why we want to do it, here's the due diligence that we've done, working with the private sector and our staff, to analyze the impact fiscal to us and to the city, as well as the quality of life impact. And so I don't really necessarily exclude all of them, but I think we should look at it as a whole, as we continue to go down the road, to kind of answer the question, who's going to help, who's going to hurt, and what is it going to cost, and who's going to pay for it? And those are key questions you need to ask in every policy decision that you do. And so this particular project is one of, you know, one of the most exciting projects, I think I've seen, in terms of deliverables, that can have an impact on a lot of different levels in what we do. But that's not discounting the other advocacy issues that people are going to be coming to us. So I hope we approach it the same way the council did in 1998, and look at what is the best package that we can come to consensus on to try to craft that improves the quality of life in our community, short-term and long-term. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Kavanaugh. Mr. Richards?
One question for Chris, and one question for Jim. Jim, can you confirm that we'll likely have to have a charter election on this project?
Yeah, we've looked at this, and this is most likely a 613 charter election issue.
613 charter election, okay. So you'll have an election issue that you'll have to deal with there. Chris, can you give us an idea of the financing, or the potential financing sources? We talked a lot about revenues, but, and we kind of, it had a slide on costs, but can we talk a little about potential financing sources for this? I mean, is it only bond financing? Is there, I mean, Councilmember Kavanaugh talked about a quality of life sales tax. What are some other ways to kind of break this down? And then if we do debt financing, what's the debt service look like?
Okay. Projected out.
Mayor, Councilman Richards, so thank you. So let's assume this is a 56, $60 million project. There's not, unlike when we did the Cubs project, where we had cash based on land sales, that we could work on a creative financing that way. We don't have those kind of pots of dollars available now to direct to our project like this on the front end. So it would require some kind of debt capital financing for a project like this. So if it were a secondary property tax, or even, even if it were a portion of a quality of life sales tax, it would have to be, depending how fast the council wanted to pay it off, but you could, for $60 million, let's probably say, based on, you know, current climate of interest rates, it's probably a four and a half, a $5 million annual debt service payment that we'd somehow figure out, have to, you know, I reserved the right to still confer with Larry Gibbons on that, but in the current environment, I think that's pretty close. Over about a 20-year period, that payment would be required.
Secondary property tax.
Well, so the debt payment, regardless of where the source comes from, sales tax or property tax, the debt service is on a 20-year note for $60 million at a, you know, assumed, you know, tax exempt rate would probably be about four and a half to $5 million annual payment.
Okay. Now, within the revenues that they showed us, is there enough money in there to operate the facility and do the debt service?
No, there's not. And I would actually agree with Mr. Thompson, Councilman Thompson, is that this report is very thorough, but the most, and I'm not going to try to debate whether or not those revenues are actually going to be created. The challenge we have is, how many of those can actually refunnel through that can hit the city of Mesa's actual ledger books, that I can show and carve out and say, because of this project, this happened. Oh, yeah, I can show that.
If we do in March, you know, we show the, we can take a baseline.
But this is through the whole year. This is through a whole year. And so it's blended throughout that. And plus, you've got a few revenues in here that are secondary indirect and secondary induced. And so you start kind of moving away from the original point of the generation of the revenue, so it gets a little more fuzzy that way. This also would assume that, you know, the other option is the bed tax. I mean, this assumes a million dollars a year in a new bed tax. And so there would have to be, you know, that agreement that a million, at a minimum, a million dollars. I mean, that's another solution, is suggesting that if we're going to do a project like this, maybe needs to be a greater contribution from the bed tax to prove up that if this really is going to benefit, you know, the hotel industry, then let's put in an agreement, a commitment of a million dollars or at least more to help pay for that. But you've got assumed in here a million dollars a year just for the opt-to-payoff operations. I agree, I'm comfortable, you know, looking at these numbers as it is today, that you could say, let's just assume that it's going to cover the operating costs, and that anything above and beyond that for the capital is going to require new funds, new money to cover it.
Okay, so I'm hearing bond financing with a secondary property tax.
Either, well, not.
Taxes, quality of life sales taxes.
Okay.
Potential financing sources. Any others that I'm missing?
Correct. You could take, as was suggested, you could create it as an enterprise, so you could take.
I'm trying to get at the 56 million. How do I get at?
Oh, so the problem, so the challenge is.
How do I get to build it?
Yeah, no, that's it. That's it. Because right now, they're capturing all of the, to cover the operating costs, they're capturing all of the concessions, all of the field rental, all of the incremental bed tax, all of the incremental sales tax from this activity is going into offsetting the operating costs. So any other financing of the capital has to be in addition to the incremental revenues derived from this project. So it has to be above and beyond what's already assumed in these numbers.
Okay. Mr. Court?
Yeah.
Did you guys do a financial analysis on the Field of Dreams in Gilbert? I know that had some real struggles and fits and starts. Is there any analysis that was done there that you guys are aware of?
We weren't involved in that.
You weren't involved in that one at all? That would be one.
Mesa bed tax went up.
What's that?
The Mesa bed tax went up.
Because of Field of Dreams? Good for us.
If I could point out, just to clarify, the secondary revenues from like employees, if someone is not convinced that that could be a real impact, that's in the range of about $200,000 out of the four and a half million dollars of impact. And it's a little hard to say it's going to break even when we're showing at 50% capture, you're going to have over $600,000 net. And then if you hit 70%, you're at a $2 million net above our operating costs. Say in the first year, you could even do more than 70%. I mean, there's opportunity there if you're looking for that additional revenue. A portion of that is in the facility itself.
But here, Mayor, and Council, here's the challenge. There's no one entity that's willing to stand behind and guarantee those numbers to the city of Mesa on a debt service coverage. And so unfortunately, it looks good on an analysis, but when I have to go sell bonds, I have to guarantee debt service. I have to guarantee operating costs or operating revenues, but I have to not only guarantee the payment, but I also have for the bond rating agencies, I have to show a coverage ratio above and beyond the actual payments, usually two times, one and a half times. So I have to show another source of revenue that's pledged to cover that debt that's not even related to this project. So not only would issuing the debt is important, but I have to, so that's why it has to be a whole nother increment, and that's why I don't look at these revenues as really, I mean, unless, there's no one entity that we can go and have some kind of collateral to say, okay, well, you didn't perform this year, so how are you going to make up the difference on the debt side? It doesn't exist. And that's why I'm okay to say this covers operating costs, because there's no guarantee, there's no entity that can say that we will pledge a million and a half dollars every year outside of new revenues towards the debt service.
One last one. The 10-year projections that you shared with us shows a drop off of about $1,003,000 after the first three years. What feeds into that assumption that rev, that, yeah?
We're just providing a scenario of a 70% capture for the first three years and 50% for the rest of the 10 years.
Why the drop off other facilities coming online? Is competition or?
It's just for a scenario for you to consider. We're trying to kind of establish a baseline here of saying, look, what can I, what can the city of Mesa depend on? You know, Mark will huff and puff about a 50% capture, because, you know, that's, you know, that sounds like it's unsuccessful at that point, if you're only, you know, filling this at 50%. So we're just trying to create a defendable kind of baseline for something for you to reference.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Well, it's the suggestion that the facility be sitting empty.
Yeah.
Half the weekends out of the year, which is just not going to happen.
Thank you. Mr. Finter? Quick follow-up, and I appreciate the Vice Mayor's comments. Long history, he's very, he's much more diplomatic than I as we look at these. But on my same theory of collision down the road, what are we doing? We have a normal bond cycle that we do for enterprises and other things. Are we scheduled to do some additional bond questions for this coming election cycle for anything? Or, you know, I'm saying, there's a lot coming together, but we wouldn't be asking for?
No, Mayor, Council, we, no, Mayor, Councilman Finter, we just, you know, did that large utility bond election, and we have the, some, getting close to the end of public safety. Public safety and streets are probably the next ones coming around. We just did parks. We did more recently with utilities than parks and then public safety. So you kind of do the cycle, public safety, streets is probably the next one, and which cycle that would be, whether it's this coming November, the following November, certainly their needs. But we have to kind of, you know, just balance out what the council's preference is on that.
Yeah, and I really didn't know the answer to that, so that's why I'm kind of wondering what that is, so.
Thank you. Mr. Luna, I know you're still on the phone, are you not?
Yes, I am.
Just want to make sure that we give you any opportunity that you might want. I believe this is in your district. Do you want to weigh in on this?
Sure. And what I'd like to say is, certainly, I'm very supportive of this project. I think it would be a great addition to District 5, and the potential of the revenue that it will bring to, not only to my district, but the city of Mesa, to me, is very exciting. The numbers to me are quite compelling, and certainly, that's exactly what I wanted to see. But I actually had two questions, one for Mr. Brady, and I wanted to know, can you do a combination of two in terms of financing this? Is that quality of life tax as well as bonding? Is that something that's even conceivable? So that's for Mr. Brady. And then I also wanted to ask Mark, if he could speak to, maybe Reach 11, and how that got financed, or if there was any other around the nation comparable to our proposal, and how that got funded, if he has any information relative to that.
Let me go first? Okay. Councilman Luna, I'm sure I understood the question, because I'm not sure I heard the first part of it. Was the question, can we use a combination of the quality of life, sales tax, and the secondary property tax to fund that? Is that, fund this, is that what was the question?
That's correct, Mr. Brady.
Certainly. It's just, yes, you could. I mean, you could have a blend of those two. You would have to put them both on the ballot and hope, I guess, they both passed. And sometimes when we've had a history of putting sales tax and property tax on the same ballot, we get, sometimes we get different answers in this committee, but certainly we could do that. But again, you would have, if one didn't pass, you know, you would only have a partial amount to do the project.
Mayor, Councilmember Luna, Reach 11 was funded through a bond initiative known as their 3PI Parks Preserve. I can't remember the third P initiative. As far as other facilities, we're sort of digging into that right now, trying to find out what happened in Sandy, Utah with their large facility, Boise, Idaho as well, so that we can glean some information there and share it with Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson? I'm sorry, Mr. Luna, were you, did you have anything else?
No, no, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Thompson?
I've kind of been looking through, just doing Google searches and what spare time I have, and I did find, and maybe we can, maybe we have the opportunity while we're in, at NLC to see it, but just outside of Baltimore, there's a complex very similar to this, where four soccer clubs actually got together and built this facility themselves, and they maintain it, they operate it, they take care of it. I mean, they, the whole nine yards. It's, the city's completely separate from it. So it'd be interesting, at least looking from that perspective, what did the private industry do, and how did they do it, and how did they accomplish? You know, if it costs, if it's costing us 56 million, I'm sure it was probably comparable for them, so it'd be interesting maybe to see how they financed that, and how they were able to do it themselves.
Thank you. And I think Mr. Glover has a question, but before we do that, one of the unique things about this proposal is it's going to be on a very unique piece of property, Bureau of Reclamation property, that has been given or titled to the city of Mesa from the Bureau of Reclamation, but with some very strict strings attached. We can't use it for commercial purposes. It has to be used, in my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, for recreational purposes. So I'm not sure to what extent a, someone other than the city of Mesa, I mean, in, would be, have the opportunity to take advantage of that very unique, very, I mean, this sits right on a freeway. It sits right next to existing city of Mesa soccer fields and multi-generation centers. It seems like it's very uniquely situated for almost nothing but what we're talking about using it for here. So that's just kind of a unique situation. If a private soccer club or a private industry wanted to get into this business, I don't think they could go out and recreate this environment to do this like we could with this particular piece of property. Would that be fair to say, Mr. Brady? Or, correct me, if I overstate it?
You know, that on the, I'm getting the nods on the private sector concessions, that we could not have a private sector concessions on this property, it would have to be publicly managed, apparently.
Yeah. See, and that, in my short conversation with the mayor of Frisco, he was saying that they have a management company that just takes, they pay them for that facility. And I'm not sure we could recreate that scenario, given the strings attached to this piece.
I mean, we can hire contractors to do the landscaping and maintenance, but as far as the business risk of that, and, you know, where they receive concessions revenue off of it, I don't think that's, I think that's where we would not be able to do it.
Thank you. Mr. Glover?
I am very supportive of this project. I think the city of Mesa and East Valley is very well situated to capitalize on soccer and its growing influence in American culture. All my colleagues raised very valid points on the ways to finance it, and I think what it really comes down to is what do we prioritize as a city council? What direction do we see the council going in, and what are those things that we should be involved in? I believe that this will build on our existing parks and rec, and the great foundation that we have there, and it'll just make Mesa the place to come for not only baseball, but now soccer, if we are able to build this. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Council. If there's no other discussion. Gentlemen, thank you. Great presentation. This will, we'll put this in the context of, as has been noted, other projects that are receiving a lot of consideration, and will, over the next short period of time, make some decisions relative to this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is item 1B, to hear a presentation and provide direction on the conceptual development of approximately 25 acres of property located on the southwest corner of University Drive and Mesa Drive. Mr. McVay, good to have you back.
Are you tired of being here? I don't know.
No.
You weren't supposed to nod, yes. Mayor, Council, glad to be here again. With me today is Wahid Alam of our planning department. Today, we want to get your input on potential development scenarios that we, you know, what you like about them, what you don't like about them, help provide us with some direction that we could then use to inform the development of a future request for proposals for the 25 acres located at University Mesa Drive. In preparing for this, we worked, I worked closely with John and his planning staff to come up with three very distinct, very distinct concepts. None of these concepts have any basis in plans that the city is trying to put out there. They're really there just to generate discussion, get your feedback. They do represent, though, trends in the development pattern in urban downtowns that we see out there, so that they are reflective of what potential is there. Wahid's with me because we can talk all day about what we like to see, but I can't draw a thing. Wahid has vision, all these are his babies, so if there's details about specific concepts that you want to talk about, Wahid's here to help us get through those. So some background to talk about. First, we came up with some guiding principles, essentially. These are reflective of the goals and vision of the Central Main Plan and the Downtown Vision Committee of what should be happening at University Mesa Drive. These include the idea that there should be a significant market rate component to any development that happens there, no matter what scale or intensity. That could include for sale and for rent. It should be in urban form. It should be sensitive to the Wilbur Historic District to the south. It should have a variety of building types and architectural styles, and that it should be high-quality development pattern, that whatever happens here isn't insular, that it connects and supports the broader downtown and the downtown core, and that there's a nice pedestrian environment that is included in any development. While it's not the key component, it should also include at least some non-residential neighborhood supporting commercial or retail uses. Now, that's some guiding principles. Now, as I'm leading you into some of these concepts, there are also some guiding, or some consistent design elements that you'll see throughout. These include the residential component, again, that that southern portion of the site has a low-rise residential component to help make that transition between Wilbur Historic District and any other development that happens there, that there is a variety of buildings, that there is a new and connected public open space. And that connection comes through what we want to call linear parks, that our streets can become a linear park system that helps move pedestrians through the site and to downtown, to Ben U, to a future ASU campus, to the retail corps, to the light rails line. Hibbert has an enhanced streetscape. Right now, everybody goes on Hibbert, it's almost a freeway in its west. Enhancing that streetscape benefits the residents of Wilbur Historic District while providing a nice pedestrian connection to any development and the main street area. Also, we include a realignment of Hibbert at University, so it aligns with Hibbert north of University. Right now, that offset, it creates a dangerous pedestrian environment for crossing the university. And to help facilitate better through traffic, there's a new, there is new east-west connection, whether it's in the same place and each concept changes, but that will help facilitate better flow through the site. So the first concept that we have for you, we're calling the traditional neighborhood design. The key elements here, this is almost an entirely residential development. It has opportunities for live-work units in a more residential setting, but primarily two to three stories, middle, missing middle densities of 12 to 18 units per acre. And it has generally a mixed-use, a residential or a mixed-use building that fronts on the university to create a streetscape there.
What's that? You're kind.
What we have done with the next several slides, I didn't know, I was so, I have worn out my welcome. What we have done with the next, what we've done with the next several slides is to try and provide some precedent imagery, so that you can see a visual of what type of development we would think is possible for each of the different areas, because there are a variety of different areas for the development types to happen. So in this, in this concept, fronting on Second Street and making that transition from the Wilbur Historic District, it's low-rise, it's one to two-story, it's very, very small lot, single-family residential detached or lower-density attached single-family project, product like a townhome. So that that makes a nice transition, it blends with the Wilbur Historic District. Moving north from there, that's where you start trying to get a little more intensity, but still at a more residential scale, two to three stories. So things like courtyard apartment buildings, or bungalow courts, or duplexes, or apartment houses. So it's, but the key here is not the building type so much as that within that area, there is a variety of building types. So when you're walking down the street, it gives a feel of an existing, long-existing urban neighborhood that has that, that when we go into the West Second neighborhood, you don't get that consistent architecture, you get a very distinctive architecture, depending on which house you're looking at. And then along University, this provides the opportunity to have a mixed-use building, or if the market isn't there for mixed-use building, it allows it to be all residential, and as the market goes, as the market demand increases for retail or commercial activity, the building could transition its use over time. the building could transition its use over time. The second concept that we brought to you, each, each of these, we're going to go up in intensity a little bit. We're, we're terming this one the Main Street Mixed-Use Village. Again, some, some of the key elements of this increases the typical heights a little bit from two to three stories. Now, we're talking about two to four stories. It creates a Main Street feel along what would be a third, third-street alignment. There is surface parking included in this, but that surface parking is constructed in a way that allows a shared parking model and could become structured parking over time as demand warranted. Again, we have a dedicated commercial office building along University Drive that helps provide that buffer from the neighborhood, from University Drive into the neighborhood. Making the transition from the, the previous concept, so along Second Street, making that transition from Wilbur Historic District to this development, we would anticipate, instead of having single-family detached structures, here we're looking at more like single-family detached structures, more townhome, rowhouse type of development. As you move into the Main Street area, you're looking at buildings that, that have more of a commercial feel architecturally or create that streetscape that can provide the opportunity for, for some neighborhood serving retail, maybe, maybe coffee shops, things along that line, but not to the scale that it would draw customers away from the existing downtown. This is meant to support the neighborhood that's surrounding while downtown supports the broader area. And then again, office building, commercial building that can transition over time along university. Now, our third concept that we bring is our mid-rise mixed-use center. So this is the highest intensity. We're looking, we anticipate that this could accommodate buildings of four to eight stories. It does, again, still allow that variety of uses because of the scale of the buildings, it could be a very mixed-use center and that it would include a signature office building at university that really helps draw people's attention to the site and bring them in. This includes a central parking structure that allows, again, a shared parking model for the site. Having said all that, even though this would be the highest intensity use, there is still that low-rise transition between Wilbur and, and the rest of the development site. Again, more along the line of attached products. They allow a little bit more density, maybe, maybe a little bit more height. You're looking at three stories instead of two stories, but still it's making a reasonable In the, in interior to the site, you start to look at buildings that are, are able to wrap parking structures. So it may be what a lot of people call the Texas Donut, where you have a parking structure in the middle and, and the development surrounds the outside of it. Similarly, these buildings could be built around a, a parking structure or they could be built around an interior courtyard and then be, be parked off of that other parking structure. But again, the scale has increased. This is a much more urban footprint, allows a much more, a much wider variety of uses and more change over time. And then a signature building along university, something that will really draw people in. Ideally, this would be the, probably the highest, the tallest building in this development, but it would be of an architectural quality and a design that would, would be iconic for the area. So I'm going back to our, our final guiding principles. I'm going, I know you've been here a long time already this morning, so I went through pretty quickly. But back to our guiding principles, I really want to, to get council's input. Was there, was there things about any of those concepts that you liked? Were there things that you really didn't like? Or is there direction you'd like to provide staff as we work towards putting together an RFP that we would release to the public in the future?
Great. Thank you, Mr. Glover.
Well, thank you, Jeff. I appreciate the PowerPoint presentation that you and Wahid put together. I am very interested in all of these potential things, but I think what we need to focus on mostly is market-rate housing. Meeting with developer, I'm like, they say that they can bring in condos, rowhouses, apartments, townhomes. I think that would be the preference. I'd love to see kind of like a gas-lamp district, kind of like in San Diego, where it kind of connects, creates that pedestrian pathway while still allows the Wilbur District to maintain its integrity and that you get the feedback from those residents. Because like I tell any developer that wants to come in my district, you need to go meet with those that'll be seeing your development every single day. And if you get their stamp of approval, you can have mine. And I think by creating that, it will still add to the vibrancy of downtown, but not detract from it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kavanaugh.
Thank you. I really appreciate the presentation, the examples, imagery that you've provided. This property originally started to be vacated around 1990 for the, originally the replacement for Hulk on Stadium was going to go here. And so it's a very large property, very well positioned for really new housing downtown. And I think for a variety of reasons, it just hasn't moved forward. But I think it's a, it's a great opportunity for market-rate housing, a variety of types. And, and what I really appreciate is your sensitivity to the Wilbur Historic Neighborhood. Like, my first night on council, that was one of the, the votes that we had to approve right away before we knew what, what it was. And Mr. Giles and I had to do that for the two historic neighborhoods. And I think this is very sensitive to that, provides a great transition. And I think the Wilbur Neighborhood provides a great element to, for the sustainability of what goes on here, a very attractive opportunity to, to share really the neighborhoods. And I do like the idea of exploring things like, like rowhouses, townhouses, things like that, because that's a kind of urban lifestyle that is clearly trending across the country. People want the urban, pedestrian-oriented lifestyle. They want close access to restaurants and entertainment and, and services. They want good access to, to mass transit. And so I think the design, the images that you've done, again, looking at the various housing types with some of the supporting components is really excellent. And I think it's, those are, those are key elements for an RFP that we would look at.
Thank you, Mr. Kavanaugh. Gentlemen, kudos. I think this is, isn't it, let's take, step back just a minute and think about, this is a nice problem to have, isn't it? And the problem that we wrestled with earlier this morning of having competing projects for downtown is a nice problem to have. So I, let's, let's just celebrate that for a moment, that there are people that want to come to downtown Mesa and build new and exciting projects. That's great. So that's a, a, something that we ought to just acknowledge. And I think this is a great opportunity. And I'm looking forward to this becoming something that really helps turn around downtown Mesa. I think that it's important that we get some, a lot of buy-in here. What I don't want this to be is a neighborhood that's designed by the Mesa City Council. That sounds like a really bad idea. I, I think we need to have the development community weigh in on this. We need to have, this is a perfect opportunity for neighborhood engagement. As it is, over the last little while, we've seen a lot of neighborhood activity in West Mesa in particular, and they're chomping at the bit to be engaged and to be, to weigh in and to give us ideas. So, you know, here it is. It's a, we just serve this up and let's get the neighbors to weigh in and tell us what they think. Let's get the development community to tell us what they would actually do. And then let's come up with an RFP. I have talked with the development community about this piece of property for the last year and a half, and they've told me that, yes, when you do an RFP, well, we're all over it. We're, you know, new home sales in Mesa, Arizona are, are crazy right now. So I, I think that we ought to be very optimistic about this. And, and I think it's very exciting. So my suggestion would be, Jeff, and I, we'll see what, if it's the consensus of the council or not, but that we do come up with a community engagement plan for this and also a, a, an outreach plan to, to meet with members of the development community and to ask them their ideas. I think that'll, that'll serve two purposes. First is to develop some curiosity and some interest in the development community so that when the RFP hits the street, they'll, they'll recognize it as something that they're interested in, but also to get their expertise. The other day, I was going to a, one of my son's sporting events and I got a little bit turned around in a, a little neighborhood in Gilbert. And it was these, a neighborhood of cluster homes. And it was beautiful. It was about this size, you know, 10, 20 acres and a very master-planned community that had courtyards and walking spaces and a lot of little single-family homes. That was beautiful. And I, to me, I just remember thinking, I wish I could just pick this up and plop it down on a place like the 22 acres of Mesa Drive and, and the university. So there's a lot of exciting potential here. So council, I, how was this agendized? Are you, Mr.?
Just asking.
Looking for just some direction?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I, I think, would it be fair, council, to say that we are anxious to get community input on this and sort of perhaps ask Mr. McVay to draft a, a plan for us to take this, to, to develop some ideas, maybe the ones that Wahid has already come up with, but maybe some that also have the benefit of having heard from the, the development community? And then prepare a bunch of pretty boards and we have a few meetings with the neighbors and get some advice? Mr. Finter?
Quickly, all I would say is expedite. I was hoping that we would have this scar fixed before we leave and as fast as we can do it appropriately and as professionally, but please, let's don't linger on processes.
Yeah, hallelujah. I mean, the market is right for this right now. If we talk about it for a year, who knows? So let's, let's get something up and running ASAP. Council, any other direction for staff? Mr. Luna, on the phone, did we give you an opportunity to weigh in on this?
No, I, I agree with everything that's been said. I certainly going to defer to my colleague, council member Glover. It's important that the, the community that's going to be around that area weigh in on this. And I appreciate if we add these concepts and bring developers and the community together. Certainly, that's the direction that I would pursue.
Thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen. Nice presentation. The next item on our agenda is item 1C.
Mayor, excuse me, mayor.
Oh, I apologize.
Did you have one or two speaker cards on that item?
Thank you very much. I, I apologize. I just got through touting how important it is to have citizen engagement and I was about to not have people speak. So we have two requests to speak on this item. The first is from Priscilla Crosswhite. I apologize for neglecting to bring you forward, Priscilla.
Good morning, mayor, city council and Mesa staff members. I live at 141 North Wilbur. My name is Priscilla Crosswhite. I'm three houses basically away from that exact spot where the development will take place. And I actually just heard about it this past week and so I kind of got a little excited about it because rumors were going around. I just want to thank you for considering us and for what you've said today, especially Mr. Glover. I really appreciate that. We, we like having input, obviously, because we all care about our historical neighborhood very much. We worked hard to get it this way and we've put a lot of effort and time and money into our homes. Really, there's, I, all of my questions you pretty much answered in, in your discussion. And I just want to thank you for your consideration and I look forward to doing, attending meetings where you're going to be discussing what's going to happen. Our neighbors have input. They do have input. I have a little list here that was handed to me. I can read it real quick if you'd like to hear it. Historic-looking homes, affordable business opportunities, community garden, historic neon sign park, ASU campus dorms, grocery store, farmer's market, destination spot, revitalize downtown youth. I like, I, those are just our, my main concern when I heard about it was that it not be made into low-income housing. I kind of panicked when I thought that might happen because I know they made the low-income housing right across the street on the north side of university. And that's fine. That's a nice development, but there's a lot of bad stuff that comes out of that area and I sure really don't want that right at the end of the street where I'm living. And so I was concerned when I saw they were talking about east-west connection, pedestrian, thoroughfare. I don't know how that works and I'm interested in these meetings, how that's going to work. You know, is there going to be like a ton of people walking down the street or just questions? And I'm sure that I can get these answered when we have the meetings. And so I, I just thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Priscilla. Next, we have a card from Jerry Meeks.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council. I, I just want to echo the fact that I really appreciate the thoughtful options detailed in the, in the development presentation. It was, it was wonderful. It was really what I wanted to see. I certainly would like to see residential put back into that area. I love the thought of the, the mixed-use village. I'd like to see nothing more than four stories tall. I think that that would really blend into the area. I really love the fact that you're considering the Wilbur Family Historic District and the historic design in your, in your, in your thoughts. And other than that, I'd love to be a part of the conversation and I appreciate your time. I appreciate all the thought that you're putting into this. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Jerry. Next, we have Janice Genovois. Janice, I'm getting better at your name.
You really are. Good morning, mayor and council. You guys have seen a lot of me lately. As you know, I have lived at Glenwood Wilbur Historic District since its inception. And so I watched the old structures be torn down and I live three doors and I own a property four doors and three doors from this site. And we've been waiting a long time for this. And I am so looking forward to working with you in the City of Mesa. We had a wonderful experience working with you when we built our new fire station. And though we didn't get everything we wanted, we really wanted it situated on the south side of the street, we had to lose two historic homes to put it in. But the bottom line is, it looks historic. It was built to the 1930s perspective. We have a beautiful park and a wonderful neighbor. And I'm confident that we're going to build something else beautiful together. I will go out on nextdoor.com. There's a lot of people saying that there's low-income housing going up here and I'll clean that up. I'm very glad to hear what you had to say this morning and thank you for the wonderful presentation. We would like a gas-lamp district. We would like you to know that historic districts around the country are known for their quirky, artsy, upscale character and charm. Let's move that feeling out onto Site 17. Let's inspire downtown. Let's cultivate, you know, environment that brings back the tenacity and youth and excitement that we're trying to create in revitalizing downtown. And we thank you so much for your support and help.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, Janice. Okay, thank you. Council, any more discussion on agenda item 1C? If not, we'll move on to, and Mr. McVay, you feel like you've got direction from us on this?
Yeah, fair. Just maybe make sure I'm clear. So I think we'll still follow up with the, the community, just kind of maybe walk through these with them specifically, get some feedback. I heard some good comments tonight, but I think we want to make sure they not only understand maybe the vision, but the process that we're going to go through so we can define those opportunities that will reengage them, not only beginning, but also during the process as we bring this in. And we will also reach out, mayor, to the development community ahead of the RFP going out. And one, if nothing else, just to really generate some interest and kind of show them what we're looking at, maybe get some feedback from them also.
Mr. Richards.
I think I need to get a little clarity on what the RFP is intended to accomplish because, you know, there are several ways you can do it. You can put out an RFP and, and say, hey, what would you propose to do on this site? And you'd have a variety of, of developers or a variety of home builders that might come and propose some things, you know. Really, I think what we need to, what I think that we need is we need some kind of like master developer, some, some person that, that can oversee as a consultant to us, the development of the site and weigh different proposals against these renderings, against, you know, what our council direction is and the needs of the Wilbur Historic District. Because I, I, I'm worried that just putting out an RFP out and, and somebody says, oh, yeah, we'll do this on 22 acres is, 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 we'll have, we won't have as good a result. But I think we need somebody that can guide, guide the process. So I mean, I think that our first RFP we should do is to, to have somebody that can oversee that process and weigh proposals against each other and look at, maybe somebody wants to come in and just fill five acres of it or they want to do two acres of it. I think we need to be able to break it down in smaller chunks like that. We often have, we have to have somebody that has an understanding of absorption rates. You know, just taking down the whole thing all at once may not be the right idea. We also have other private parcels, Brown &amp; Brown, for example, that's been acquired and is in the hands of our former mayor and John Graham, who's a quite good developer across. And so we have some market issues. We have, you know, stuff going on over at Encore. So I, I'm trying to, I, I think, I, we really need somebody that could fit all these Encore, so I'm trying to, I think we really need somebody that could fit all these pieces together, because I don't think that expertise lies with the city, it lies in the development community. So how do we get to that? How do we tap into that in this process?
So, mayor, council, Richards, let me make sure I'm clear, what you're asking, I think having a master plan is important. I guess what I'm trying to understand is the difference between a master plan concept that's done ahead of a RFP or are you looking for us to, the proposal is really to go solicit a master plan developer who maybe not necessarily comes to us with all the specific products but is a demonstrated developer taking on multiple uses and being able to develop out of property with different concepts so that we're evaluating someone on that concept as opposed to a master plan. The challenge we were having is, we were somewhat reluctant from staff to say, kind of where you're going, is saying, this is exactly what we want today. Well, we're not in that world and being able to engage, you know, the performance of different mixes of uses and as you say, absorption rates, but I could imagine we could ask for a master plan, a master part developer of this entire area who has the responsibility to perform and develop it out over a period of time.
You think of entities like DMB or Harvard Investments or Sunbelt Holdings, you know, John Graham's company, you think of those guys who look at an entire site over time, DMB is probably the best example out with Eastmark, they had a huge site and they knew that there'd be a variety of uses out there. And we want a variety of uses here, I think if we throw our lot to a single RFP and you get somebody responding with a development proposal on it, you know, then they become the master developer and we kind of lose a little bit of control. I'd like to have a master developer that works for the city and protects our interest and the Wilbur Historic District's interest and looks at this in a holistic way with how it fits in with the context of the city instead of trying to do a land transaction. I don't want this to just be a land transaction, it has to be more thoughtful than a land transaction. And putting out a regular RFP on this, we run the risk of having a regular, just a land transaction, that's not what we're trying to accomplish here. So that's, you know, so take that feedback and how you will and let's step back from the transactional piece of it and look at the visionary piece of it, because that's what we really need to get at. And it has to be grounded in markets, you know, what does the market bear, you know, what is the gap here? You know, we're going to create our own market a little bit on this site as well. I mean, you get a regular market study and it'll tell you, oh, you know, you need to do this, you know, but we're in a position, I think, that we can create our own markets. But anyway, that's my two cents, I'm sorry to confuse you further.
Yeah, I think, let's come back and visit about that because I think on one hand, a map, you know, a DMB or someone like that, they have skin in the game, so they're, they do control for, you know, the property is theirs to develop under a certain, you know, we could give certain guidelines and principles, but if it's going to be just a consultant working for the city who's not got skin in their real estate but they're just there to help complete the plan.
They need to feel that their skin is ours too, I mean, somebody that can protect our interests, protect, you know, a variety of interests and, you know, and it doesn't have to be any of the names that I threw.
So why don't we do this, the mayor suggests we go visit with the development community, why don't we have that conversation and come back and get some ideas to you, how would that be?
Yeah, what do you think? I mean, I think really, we need to understand the market, we need to understand the opportunity.
I don't disagree.
This is a big deal, you got to get it right.
Okay. Quickly, is what I heard.
I agree. But not transactional, I mean, this needs to be visionary.
I think what we need here is a master plan community, we need people, and I don't mean, you know, people like a retirement home, I mean, we need people that have the big vision and want to get all the pieces working together. So Mr. Graham's name was mentioned, the last time I had a conversation with him about this, he was very excited and he said, you know, what I'd love to do, I'll volunteer, he said, I know all the home builders, I deal with them every day, you know, I'd be happy just to facilitate a charrette where we come in and we tell you what we would like to see in an RFP and that might help you to draft a good RFP and it would also help me and my friends to get excited about responding to the RFP. So we need to have that engagement, we also need to have the neighborhood engagement, but it's kind of a cart and a horse thing or maybe it's simultaneous, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I actually think you invite the Wilbur neighborhood to do it alongside, and the interested parties that do a charrette right alongside the developers. And everybody's in the room, have Main Street business owners, city officials, you know, the charrettes are fun, the dreaming's free. And that's the part of free dreaming is a charrette. So I think, you know, throwing them all in a room and locking it up for a few hours and seeing what comes out for a few days or however long it takes would be an interesting way to go about it.
Jeff, I'm not very envious of you right now because you've gotten a lot of good ideas thrown at you.
He loves doing this stuff, though, mayor.
That's true.
I tried to, I tried to leave this chair, you wouldn't let me.
Thank you, so I think we're good, I think we can work on. Staff feels like you. Thank you, we look forward to coming here and what you're coming up with. The next item on our agenda is item 1C, we don't have any more cards, do we? Okay, thank you. 1C, appointments to the Building Board of Appeals and Transportation Advisory Board. Is a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye, aye, any opposed, thank you. Next item is information about current job order contracting projects. Council, any questions regarding those? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 3, which is here reports on meetings and conferences attended. Mr. Kavanaugh.
Mayor, last night I attended another great event in the Fiesta District at Mesa Community College, had the dedication for its new $2 million art gallery space, first time there's been a permanent art gallery space at Mesa Community College, which has one of the largest arts-related programs of any community college in the country. This is part of the 2004 bond package that our residents supported, it's, I think, the last component of that project, it's, I think it's a very nice addition to the Fiesta District in terms of attracting visitors to the area, it's very nicely complement to the vision that the city and the communities had for it and I applaud Mesa Community College for working on it. The architects of the Mesa Art Center were the architects for this facility, which is, has a lot of different kinds of uses available to display art, not only faculty, faculty, staff and students, but visiting artists really from around the world, so it's, congratulations to MCC.
Thank you, Mr. Richards.
We would be remiss if we didn't congratulate our very own Mesa Man of the Year, Dennis Kavanaugh, who was honored Wednesday night?
Tuesday night.
Been a long week already. And he was honored in song, in prose, in speech, did anybody dance? Anyway, save us. Hard fought congratulations, I think I speak for all of my colleagues in congratulating you, a well-deserved honor. Nobody works harder with his constituents on this council than Dennis Kavanaugh and he sets a high bar that we all fail to achieve regularly and, but I've appreciated him as my mentor and somebody who I've learned a lot from over the years, but Dennis, congratulations for that honor, you deserve it.
Any other comments on meetings or on reports or conferences attended? Thank you. Hearing none, Mr. Brady, bring us up to date on scheduling of meetings and general information.
Thank you, mayor, just a reminder, this Saturday, February 27th, from 12:30 to 5:30 is Day at the Diamond at Sloan Park, and so we invite everybody out as we kick off spring training, it's a free event with music, food and sports card show. Also, Saturday is the kickoff of the Street Pianos of Mesa, it's been getting a lot of great publicity. So there'll be 24 pianos that'll be together for one day at the Mesa Art Center from 2:00 to 5:00 PM and then they'll be on display throughout the downtown area from February 27th to April 9th. And invite you to come out again to the Food Court Forest at Pioneer Park, lots of good food there from 5:30 to 9:00 PM on Saturday evenings. Our next study session will be February, or March, what is it, sorry, I have the wrong date, March 3rd, thank you, 7:30 AM, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Gentlemen, if there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn, thank you. And second, all in favor, please say aye, aye, we are adjourned. Thank you, Luna.